You can take action, you can vote.
The administrative conference of the Shreveport City Council is now called to order. If you would, please stand, and Councilman Webb will lead us in an invocation, followed by pledge of allegiance by Councilman Shine, and this would be a great time to silence your cell phones. Thanks.
Heard that, didn't you?
Yeah, that's right. It seemed to me rigid for mine. Thank you.
Fire ahead, please. Our most gracious heaven, Father, just thank you for this beautiful day, the cooler weather that we're receiving, and just thank you that we do have change of seasons, and Father, we ask for your blessing on each and every person here today. Guide and direct our thoughts, our actions, and our words today as we meet, and forgive us where we fail, in which presence in Jesus' name.
On the knees. Face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What's going on, Councilman?
Madam Clerk, will you please call a roll?
Ms. McCullough?
How's the family?
Mr. Everson?
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins?
Here.
Mr. Corbin?
Here.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Shine?
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins?
Present.
Tomorrow, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the administrative conference on Monday, September 23rd, and city council meeting on Tuesday, September 24th. We welcome our guests with us today and staff, as always. Thank you for being here. At this time, does any council member have any awards, recognitions, or distinguished guests?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to recognize Dorothy. For your new hairstyle, now. It's pretty, yeah.
What about mine?
Look like it's growing, too. Yeah, B, B look like yours growing, too.
Thank you.
Okay.
We're gonna quickly go to Councilman Sancho.
Jackie, you see I threw a head back at him?
He's been here already.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to remind everyone, on this coming Monday, October 14th, and Tuesday, October 15th, we will be having some public meetings. We're gonna discuss a variety of subjects. Everything from water and sewer increases, as well as assistance programs that we're trying to put together for the public, public safety, crime reports, private standards, code enforcement, Operation T-Bone, and any other concerns that our citizens may have. We're inviting them to come out on Monday, October 14th, at Bellberry Park, and Tuesday, October 15th, at Cockroo Park on Pines Road. Both meetings will begin at 6:00 PM and will end promptly at 7:30 PM. But this will give our citizens an opportunity to come out and meet the department heads and people who make a lot of the decisions about your concerns, put some faces with the names that you may be talking to on the telephone, pick up some business cards, exchange some numbers. But I think our government works well and works best when our citizens and the people that have been appointed or elected to represent them face-to-face and get an opportunity to talk out some of these issues. So this is an invitation not only to the residents of District G, but this is to anybody who has some concerns or want to get some additional information about the things that are going on here at City Hall. We have extended the invitation also to some representatives from Comcast to be present, maybe to talk about the status of their services, and they want an opportunity also to talk about their community involvement, so I guess to get an opportunity also to talk about that. And we're gonna have a couple of new features that we are gonna talk about at these meetings also. We're looking at working with Shreveport Green to put in place an anti-litter program. We are getting some calls about those persons, for whatever reason it may be, were tossing trash out the windows and tossing trash along the roadways. They're gonna be looking at Shreveport Green to come in and assist and help us with that. They are willing to do that. And we're gonna have some community education concerning crime prevention and educating especially our young people about the consequences of decisions that they make, because a lot of the incidents we are seeing now, the criminal consequences, are being done in a fashion that's hard to police. There's people that just taking matters into their own hands and trying to settle up scores with one another and really not thinking about the consequences of their actions. So we're gonna have some groups that are gonna come out that we want you to meet and maybe invite to some of your churches or some of your neighborhood association meetings who can talk about educating especially our young people on our crime prevention. And we also asked the chief to come out. You know, we hear a lot about the incidents when they occur, I'm talking about criminal incidents, but we don't hear a lot about the investigations and outcome. And I think you'd be surprised to learn that our police department becomes very involved in these incidents, and in more cases than not, they're gonna find out that someone has held accountable for what has occurred. So I think it's gonna be a good meeting, this coming Monday, October 14th, at Bellberry Park, Tuesday, October 15th, at Bill Cockroo Park, from 6:00 to 7:30. And we want to extend that invitation to everyone.
You didn't call Dale's name. You want Dale, I can...
He alerted me a couple of weeks ago.
Okay. Thank you, Dale.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins, and I think that's a great idea, and I don't know how you're gonna cram all that into an hour.
Yeah.
We know how to do it, Mr. Chairman.
You're gonna have an agenda going. Any other council members have any recognitions at this time? If not, Mr. Sibley, I'll turn it over to you for recognitions, awards, and city business.
Well, there are no recognitions or awards, Mr. Chairman, but I will note for the record that I think as many citizens know, the mayor has led a delegation of some 50-plus community leaders and other involved persons on an intercity visit to Birmingham, Alabama. I spoke with him this morning, everything appears to be going well there. We expect him back, I think, tomorrow evening at some point, but just wanted to note that he is absent due to leading that delegation, and hopefully they'll come back with some great ideas on how Birmingham was able to leverage their medical and higher ed community into very much a positive and economic engine for that area. And I think that's the vision and the approach that the mayor would like to take with this visit and hopefully get some pointers on things that did well, things that didn't do so well, so we can avoid some of those mistakes. But just wanted to note that, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Sibley. At this point, does any councilman...
I have one thing. So those revenue numbers...
Which ones?
Well, in terms of tax revenue numbers.
Yes, sir.
I guess the forecasting is difficult. What do we attribute our last two months to, if anything, in particular?
Not really sure, Mr. Jenkins, other than people are maybe feeling more comfortable about spending money, but the other thing that I sent to you guys, if you get a chance to look at, is the breakdown by class, which gives you an idea of where the increases were, where we're still kind of lagging behind. But we're scheduled to meet, I think, this week with the commission, if not next week, and we'll get a better idea as to what's happening. But bottom line, it just appears that people are a little bit more comfortable spending a little bit more money out there, and that's very helpful to us.
I understand auto sales are, the last two months, tremendous.
Yeah, and you know, and when you look at the trends over the year, they've never really dipped as much as the others. You know, they had a couple of, you know, downturns, but the other sectors were the ones that were really kind of dragging, general merchandise, general sales tax, and obviously the mining, which has yet to recover. But looks like the general sales tax numbers are, you know, 3.5 for the month. It's not a bad month, and hopefully we've still got some good positive fall months that are coming, leading into the holiday season. So we feel much better about those numbers, although we're still maintaining a very conservative projection on it.
I mean, it'd be nice to get back to 2012.
It would.
At a minute.
It would be very nice.
Well, hey, it's better to be closer to it.
Yes, well, I'm happy to say, you know, we're inching our way up there.
In the right direction there.
It looks like if you're looking at trends, it looks, if it maintains, the worst is behind us, so let's hope.
You know, and just kind of loosely, if you project it out of the next four or five months in this reporting year, and you look at the gap between where we are and what we're projecting for this month, and you look at that average, which I think roughly works out to be about $6 million per month, and even with our down months, we've kind of exceeded that number, so it really looks good for us to meet our projections. And, you know, again, we'll knock on wood and cross our fingers and hope the economy still has people, at least in this area, feeling comfortable enough to continue to shop.
And, Mr. Sibley, I know tomorrow we'll have a brief report for the council and the public on that.
Yes.
Appreciate it. Does any council member have any concerns relative to property standards at this time?
I don't, but could I ask one more question just about the revenue collections that we got? Can you refresh my memory, and I know that we talked about this, and I'm just not remembering right now, but the EMS billing, tell me where, I noticed that's where the large discrepancy is, and I remember we had had a conversation about the reimbursements, but I don't recall...
What you see on the chart is, you know, the original projection for the budget was about $5 million. What you see on the chart is a bump up to about $7 million or so to account for the UPL money that has come in over the course of the year. So that's the money that's based upon our ambulance runs in conjunction with the state. It's actually a federal program. The state leverages all the major, I guess, EMS carriers throughout the state to leverage basically more money from the feds in terms of reimbursement, and they're in turn kicking that back out to the municipalities that participate. So it's been a welcome and unanticipated source of revenue for us, and we're projecting that forward, and hopefully it will continue as long as that program is in effect, because it benefits the state as well as benefits us locally. I'd asked, we can do it tomorrow, but if I may now, Charles, if you could just come up and just kind of give a recap as to where we are, Mr. Chairman, is that okay? Give you an idea of currently where that program stands in terms of revenue to the city. Hope I didn't put you on the spot, Charles.
Yeah, so far this year, we've had two drawdowns under the program. The first one was in June. We sent the state $260,000, and they returned us $598,000. The second one was just last month. We sent the state $618,000, and they returned us $1,405,000. So so far, we have netted $1.1 million on the program for this year, and they expect to have one more drawdown in December. So depending on how much our UPL is, we could expect another maybe $700,000 of net revenue on this program.
I wish when I sent a check to the state, I got a check back.
Right.
Doesn't seem to be the case.
Thank you, Charles.
But that's good news.
Any other questions? If we have no concerns relative to property standards, we have already discussed our revenue collection plan. We'll have a report on that tomorrow, and we have received our security bond forfeiture report electronically. Any questions about that today?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just ask one point of clarification. We are anticipating doing the budget overview tomorrow. Tomorrow's council meeting, just want to be sure, is that still expected of us, still...
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Captain Oliver Jenkins.
No, I have to think about it a second. What I was gonna ask didn't make sense after that statement, so...
We'll come back to you when you're ready. We have no public hearing today. Mr. Sibley, any legislation to be added tomorrow?
None that we're aware of, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Thompson, are you aware of any?
No, not at this time.
I have no request to speak at this time. I have no confirmation for appointments. We have no items under consent agenda for introduction or adoption, so, Mr. Sibley, let's continue with regular agenda legislation.
This is sub-A, Resolutions on Second Reading and Final Passage Or, which will require only one reading, number 177. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor to make application with the Louisiana Commission on Law Enforcement through the Northwest Law Enforcement Planning Agency for a multi-jurisdictional narcotics passports grant. Number 180 declares October 2013 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Number 181 declares the city's interest in certain adjudicated property as surplus and otherwise provides with respect there too. Number 182 authorizes the settlement of all claims against the City of Shreveport in the matter entitled Urban Housing of America Incorporated versus City of Shreveport and Metropolitan Planning Commission of Cattle Parish.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Sibley and council members, if you would refresh, there's a Resolution 179 that didn't show up because the net had to pull it to add some things to it, but if you will refresh, it's back there now.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Number 179 is a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement with Shreveport Business Park LLC and/or its affiliate to provide water and sewer services for ILI Motors. Chairman and members of the council, what you received today was an actual copy of the amendment. We were awaiting work back from the realty company that if we don't get back tomorrow, we will ask the council to postpone that matter until we hear back from them.
Any questions? If not, Mr. Sibley, let's proceed with introduction of resolutions.
These are resolutions not to be adopted prior to October 22nd, 2013. Number 183 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property within the City of Shreveport in conjunction with the Murphy Street Park Project, parcel number P1. Resolution 184 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property in conjunction with the Murphy Street Park Project. This is parcel number P4. And number 185 authorizes the institution of expropriation proceedings against certain described property in connection with the Murphy Street Project. This is parcel number P5. Resolution 186 authorizes the submission of the 2014 through 2018 Consolidated Plan and 2014 Annual Action Plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. That concludes that section, Mr. Chairman.
Any discussion? Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
Do we have an estimate for what these expropriations will cost?
Yes, sir, and Malcolm is gonna give you his best information to this point.
Is that... Is that about the park?
Yes, sir, for the Murphy Street Park.
The dog park, right?
What the...
It's not?
Murphy Street.
Come on, get confused.
I'll defer to Councilman Oliver Jenkins on that.
Free pass today. I thought I could get away with it.
We understand that all of them are people parks. Isn't that correct, Councilman Everson? They are people parks, right?
Correct, they are all for people.
Feel free to joke.
No dogs can drive the cars.
We do not have an estimate of the cost yet. Have not had the parcels appraised yet. They've been ordered. Normal expropriation costs per parcel, as far as legal proceedings, is usually around $2,000 plus the cost of the actual property, so...
Well, I mean, you must have some estimate of what these properties are.
We did a, I thought we did some kind of a budget for this. I know it was not...
I don't think that included land acquisition, though. I don't think the budget did.
It didn't? I thought it did.
Well, I mean, I know there was a budget, there was a set aside for it in the capital project, but I don't think it broke it down by parcels or land cost as opposed to bill.
Malcolm, do you have comparables? We've gotten other, we've dealt with other properties in that area. These are fairly...
Fine, I can probably get you a, an estimated figure of what the, I can definitely get you what the assessed value is, which will give you a perceived market value, but that's not gonna be the appraised value. I wouldn't be comfortable until I had an appraisal on it.
These are the parcels, I believe, that were owned by a nonprofit, I believe, for the housing services, so...
That's correct. Right, and that nonprofit is now defunct.
Right.
And so that's the reason we can't get title to the property, because they no longer exist, so that's the reason why we're moving with expropriation.
But then why would we have, I mean, who would we pay the cost of the property to?
Because of the registry of the court.
Registry of the court.
They have to come forward and make a claim, approve out a claim, to say that they're entitled to it.
But if the organization doesn't...
But they don't exist, so they won't, probably.
Well, like I said, we would have fulfilled our obligation once we deposit that money and register the court. Now, if some of the former board members or somebody at that organization wanna come back together and make out some kind of proof or claim or something to receive those funds, they can.
We would have a judgment of expropriation that gave us title to the property, and the money would be deposited in the registry of the court for that owner to go get if they so chose.
And if it's possible, I believe, I see Ms. Regal back there, if we could furnish the council maybe tomorrow, we had a, I think we had some kind of budget breakdown.
We'll go to the budget book and pull the budget for that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I remember voting on it and everything, and I just didn't know what portion was associated with the land cost and/or...
I don't know if they did it by parcel, but I think that was a line item, if my memory serves me right.
That would have been an estimate, though. She can provide the budget tomorrow, and Malcolm will get some close to appraised value, so that'll give you an idea as to what the overall cost may be for the park.
Just as a point of curiosity, how long does the money stay in the registry of the court if it's unclaimed?
Until it goes to the state.
Five years, I think this God has indicated, five years.
Annual notification and...
Five years.
And then it goes to the state after that?
Yes.
State claims all.
No.
Okay.
Waiter.
Of this, and this is probably more of a Shelley question.
Okay. Thanks, Malcolm.
Sure. Councilman Jenkins may be able to answer. What, assuming we got these four parcels or three parcels, how many more parcels would you need for the park, or is this covers everything?
I think it was total, maybe six.
Yeah, I think there's four more that are probably owned in addition to these three. There are three or four more.
I got you. Okay, so this isn't the whole...
No, sir.
This is just one step in this evolution.
That's right.
Correct.
And do we have, well, my questions are more about the nature of acquiring property like that, just because I know that Sam, Joe, and I probably have this in our districts more than most, being older parts of the city, especially if a nonprofit had come in and owned something and then they stopped, it causes difficulty like this, that's why I'm curious. But I'll ask my questions offline.
Olive, I think the next pieces of property will get them a little cheaper, because I think they belong to some friends of Councilman Sam's.
No, I don't know those owners at all, Councilman.
Section C, Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, yes, yes.
This is introduction of ordinances.
Please, sir, in the back.
Section C, introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to October 22nd, 2013. Number 113 amends the 2013 Streets Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 114 amends the 2013 General Fund Budget. Number 115 amends the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget. Number 116 amends the 2013 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Number 117 amends the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget.
Discussion, and I expect there will be some.
Well, I mean, I guess I'm a little concerned about why now?
Which one are we talking about?
On 113, 114.
113, 114, I mean, they're all, I'm assuming they're all the same. I mean, there's no, they're just, you gotta take it out of one, you gotta put them into something else, and then you gotta, I mean, I'm assuming that's...
And, Mr. Jenkins, members of the council, we put that on because that's going to be a part of the budget discussions as we go forward. We want to go ahead and get it on the agenda, so that when those discussions are held and the council is agreeable with the mayor's idea, some of which y'all have talked about before, that it'll be ready to go forward. But this is a matter that we think is important to the budget process for 2014.
I got you. So it's, I mean, essentially as we go through the budget and we're looking at what our reserves are gonna be forecasted for next year and what our end of year is, this is how we're gonna essentially shore up next year's reserves, not this year's reserves.
That's part of the discussion, correct.
Should we introduce it and table it?
We can, we can. We just wanted to get it on there and have it prepared for discussion.
Because it's a little misleading that it's not lumped in with the budget ordinances for next year.
And it's because it's a step that we'd like to see taken this year in anticipation of the 2014 budget. But all that would be part of the broader discussion. And I think the other one...
118?
One...
I got 117.
117.
117, that one is from you guys, but we had, on 116, famous, again, that was out of the Proposition 2 spending for the finance department to upgrade the system that we use for our fiscal record-keeping. But again, that's out of Proposition 2 monies that we talked about before.
The author of 117 is Mrs. McCullough.
Okay.
She'd be out of town tomorrow, but she did call and ask that it be introduced, and I'm sure she'll be able to debate on her own regard upon her return, so anticipate a motion for me to at least introduce it on tomorrow as she has requested.
I'd like to discuss one aspect of that, though I don't expect her to be here to defend it. But in terms of these, these dollars, is there any particular reason why they're not holistically viewed in terms of our entire budget, or is there something specific about this $1 million that is either particularly suited for road projects or this particular road project, and/or should it not be part of the Streets Special Revenue Fund and/or associated as some of that prioritization?
These are 2011 bond funds. This is interest and, Charles, interest and for some other reason, these, I know interest is a part of it. They are for streets and drainage, and they can only be used for the purposes for which the major funds could be used.
Yeah, it's, the rest of it is premium on the sale of the bonds.
I think we used for SPAR already.
And I think it's about $2 million.
Yes. Little over $2 million.
But I thought in the thing, it says, doesn't it say $1 million?
Yeah, that's what she...
It's only, yeah.
$14 million to go.
There's still another little over $1 million left that has to be spent or to be appropriated.
And then as far as this particular project goes, $2 million is already in there? I mean, how much is currently allocated to...
Ron, her CD, how much is currently allocated for?
1.5.
1.5.
I'd like some clarification, because I knew that each of us had, from the first bond sale, a million and a half to move forward with projects, although most of us allocated $3 million, knowing that second bond sale would take care of all of our projects on our list. This particular project, there's been some issues with the engineer, I understand that, and an answer today would be great, or if we need to get an answer tomorrow, that would be fine, too. I'd like to know just where the project stands. If the engineer that was selected is no longer being used, are we engineering this project in-house? Are we gonna go get another engineer? And do we even have a cost estimate?
It's being done in-house.
It's been done in-house, and Ron can speak to that, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ron.
It's being done in-house, as we speak, and it better be finished in about three or four weeks, so...
And to what additional clause?
Yeah, do we have...
We don't have that yet, but we will get an accounting, and we are gonna hold that from the engineer's final payment.
Do we think it's going to exceed $3 million?
The total project?
The total project.
I don't think so. No.
And maybe this is to Art...
That wasn't the sound of doubt.
Maybe this is to Art and Jackie, but also, Ron, you may have something. Wasn't there a project added in District A and funds used from Lakeside Paving?
I believe there was Lewis and Carver, and there's, B, that's one of the resolutions I had you look up.
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
But hers was not quite $3 million.
Okay.
So she took the rest of her money, and then we found some money some other place to do.
And I believe once we take bids, it will be less than $3 million.
And the reason for that was, it was Lewis and Carver were essentially one street, and we're only gonna do Lewis Place, and then Carver would be undone, so you're just like stopping in the middle of a street.
And, let me, Mr. Chairman, Art probably can give us a lot of practical information on that, because Dale, I think, for a while, he used to be the king's mate on that street.
Chad, that was the first house I bought in Shreveport.
Okay. Olive, I knew it was something, I mean, I knew...
You know, it's amazing when you peel back that onion. Now, things start to reveal itself.
There you go. That's why I wanted this street done.
But I sold it a long time ago.
Oh, okay, all right.
No, but certainly what I'm kinda interested in, so we had this, I'll call it $3 million, of which one project, this project was initially, the Hershey-D Wilson project was initially budgeted at $3 million, was it?
Two, something, something less than $3 million.
Something less. And so in that, whatever that delta was, there was a proposal that we voted on, or I guess we voted on, to do this, these other streets, or this other street.
Right.
And then when we realized that, well... And then when we realized that, well, if you're gonna do half of the street, you might as well do the whole thing, it just doesn't make sense. So that got augmented a little above and beyond that $3 million price tag. Okay. And in this particular case, just so I understand it, though, I have this in a text message. The intent here is that she, this project would use some of these additional funds, but that, that's more a timing issue so she could finish this project without having to wait for the second bond sale? Or is it the suggestion that...
That is one way it could be done, yes.
Or is there some suggestion that her particular allocation would be a million above and beyond everybody else?
I don't think that this particular ordinance answers that question.
I think that, I think that comes back to actions that we take, that if we're simply advancing a million dollars to get the project completed, if that is actually enough, then projects for that district would be complete at that point.
And I believe that's what she's attempting to do, from my understanding of the conversation. That after the second bond sale, you know, there's not gonna be additional money for her.
Right.
It's like she's getting this money here, and then the money from the second bond sale would not be used for an additional project that, you know, this council does not come together and agree on.
Again, so that would go into either another street's deliberation or prioritize across.
That's, that's the understanding I received from her in my conversation.
Your suggestion would be unappropriated bond funds that could be used for any purpose within that category.
That definition, right.
Right.
But it's not gonna be an additional one. She's not expecting it, you know, gotta watch what, what grows out. That's what I'm saying. My conversation led me to believe she's not looking for an additional 1.5.
I mean, I'm gonna make it clear that that's not what I'm in favor of. Whether she was here or not, I would be very clear in that. And I don't know what kind of controls we need to put in place to ensure that is clear, but I'm all for ultimately doing that.
Is it my, my, my understanding that any money coming from that neighborhood, a street project from the bond, doesn't have to come before the council? I think we have something in place where it has to come before the council such as this to, to be approved?
There's no doubt that a new project could come before the council.
But I, but I believe you're right, is we have to approve it as a project.
Yeah, yeah. Particularly come out of the streets. Yes, that's something y'all did.
If, I mean, if we're here, I don't know how long, you know, that's gonna be with it.
Well, I mean, you know, I mean, conceivably, you could have a bond project, you could not start the sale of the bonds until the next term, and then we'd be starting this whole deal all over, and we'd have these quote, well, this is what I thought was gonna happen type of deal.
It would probably help to put some language like that in the fact sheet, at least in the fact sheet.
Thanks, Senator. Councilman Webb.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, clarification here. The money that, that we're in reference to is the money that's still left from the first bond.
Correct. The, the additional, the $1 million that, that Councilwoman McCullough is asking for right now is...
Why have we been just sitting on that money and not using it for some of the projects that are ready? And it just sitting there waiting for somebody to demand it?
Good question.
I mean, we've all been demanding, you know, several street projects that we've, we've asked to be funded, and people are begging and crying for it, and yet we're just sitting here holding this money waiting on what? So, I mean, and so now all of a sudden, somebody comes along and says, well, I want the $2 million for my street. It, it, it doesn't seem, I'm not against her getting the road built, but it just doesn't seem like it's been, the whole thing's just topsy-turvy. You know, I mean, it just don't make sense to me. It's just, I don't know what's going on, why, why we're holding the money and, and why we haven't been paving some of these roads in everybody's district.
I think it's good to know that we have an extra $2 million in the, out of the 21 million in the streets to use. It, yes, it would, it's interesting that it's just been sitting out there.
I mean, every one of us have a street we could, we could claim a couple million dollars for, Limwood, Jewella, I mean, you know.
Yeah.
Joe could use a couple mil for his end of Jewella, could you, Joe?
That's right.
You know, it just, so...
Well, even further to projects that are already agreed to be in there that just are not, that are waiting on, not necessarily new projects.
That are ready to go.
That's what I'm talking about.
Projects that are ready, engineered.
Not all of them are waiting on engineering and design.
Yeah, some are ready, they just need funds. Dell, I know it's too quick for tomorrow, most likely, but for our next meeting, could we get an update of all the street projects? If they need to be engineered, what the status of that is? If they're engineered and they're just sitting out there ready for the next bond sale or whatever?
I'm sure we can have an...
The status of each of those street projects that we've identified, I think that would be helpful.
And Mr. Chairman, if I may, if you guys recall when we brought forth an administration adjustments in Proposition 1 and 2 out of the premium monies, and we said that 3 was the one that was streets, and we didn't feel it was our, you know, responsibility to do that. We were kinda waiting the mayor to get with you guys and decide which one of those projects you wanna go forward with. So we were taking those steps with 1 and 2, the premium monies, but 3 was obviously one that's a little more, we assemble a little beyond our expertise in making those decisions on what streets are done in you guys' districts. So the monies are there, but I think it's gonna take a little discussion between y'all and the mayor in terms of, of how that additional funding is spent.
Well, I think if we can identify projects that are ready to go, if we can apply some of these funds to them, that'll be good, keeping within our allocation by council district. And then when we get to the end, we can see what's left in the fund and how we want to divvy that up or take some citywide project or something at that point.
Well, we'll also bring, we'll update the balance and see exactly how much is left in there. And we'll have the update on the street projects tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley.
Yes, sir.
Any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman, 1, on 116, I misread my notes and misspoke. That is actually a reconciliation of all the capital projects between famous, within famous, so that's more of a reconciliation ordinance, not a software ordinance, as I indicated.
Thank you.
These are ordinances not to be adopted prior to December 15, 2013. Basically, the budget ordinances, number 118 adopts the 2014 Capital Projects Fund Budget. Number 119 adopts the 2014 Riverfront Development Fund Budget. Number 120 adopts the 2014 General Fund Budget. Number 121 adopts the 2014 Retained Risk Fund Budget. Number 122, the 2014 Metropolitan Planning Commission Fund Budget. Number 123, the 2014 Community Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 124, the Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 125, the 2014 Shreveport Redevelopment Agency Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 126, the 2014 Downtown Entertainment Economic Development Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 127, the 2014 Airport Enterprise Fund Budget. 128, 2014 Water and Sewerage Fund Budget. 129, the budget funding contractual services provided to Sportran by Metro Management Associates Incorporated. Number 130, the 2014 Downtown Parking Enterprise Fund Budget. Number 131, the 2014 Convention Center Enterprise Fund Budget. Number 132, the 2014 Convention Center Hotel Enterprise Fund Budget. Number 133, the 2014 Debt Service Fund Budget. Number 134, the Street Special Revenue Fund Budget for 2014. Number 135, the 2014 Golf Enterprise Fund Budget.
Thank you, Mr. Sibley. Any discussion? Councilman Webb.
I'm gonna ask about the SWEPCO franchise fee. I know we, we took the money out of it and put it into the general fund, whatever amount that was here a few months back.
Well, right now, it's all still sitting in the Street Special Revenue Fund.
We were talking about doing that, but we did not.
But we did not?
We did not.
Okay. So what does that balance stand right now? Does anybody know?
Well, I mean, it's, are we including the 5 and 1/2 that's dedicated to the asphalt overlay? Because that probably hadn't quite been appropriate.
We're trying to see if we can pull it up real quick. Charles may have it off the top of his head.
You actually moved $10 million to a capital project. So there's about 2 and 1/2 million, between 2 and 1/2 and 3 million still in the fund that has not been appropriated, just sitting in fund balance.
That's including up to date what we've received at the current balance?
Uh, yes.
You sure that's not budgeted and not what we've received?
There were six, there's $6 million each year budgeted to be received. There was already $6 million in there from the first years. So there was a total of, there was a total of 12, almost 13 million budgeted for 13. $10 million of that was moved to a capital project. So the remainder of that, all of which has not been received yet.
That's what I'm saying.
Because we haven't received the fourth quarter amount from SWEPCO. So the actual cash balance would be less than that, but it's budgeted to have about $3 million at the end of the year.
Thank you. And Mr. Thompson, don't we normally, if we introduce these budget ordinances, don't we just normally turn right around and table them until December? After the introductions? Mr. Sibley, would you please proceed with the ordinances, so in second reading and final passage?
Number 105 amends the 2013 Capital Improvements Budget. Number 106 amends the 2013 General Fund Budget. Number 107, the 2013 Grants Special Revenue Fund Budget. Number 108, authorizes the mayor to execute an agreement granting a utility servitude to AEP SWEPCO at Corvus Park. Number 112, and ordinance to repeal ordinance number 11 in 1972, which created a four-way stop intersection at Creswell Avenue and Southfield Road, and to enact the intersection of Creswell Avenue and Southfield Road as a two-way stop intersection. Number 109 is zoning matter C6413. It's an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances, City of Shreveport by rezoning property located on the east side of Church Street, beginning 300 feet east of Church Street, from Grantham to 241 feet south of Martin Avenue, extending east Shreveport Cattle Parish, Louisiana, changed from R1H Urban One Family Residence District to R1HE Urban One Family Residence Extended Use District, limited to the stockpile of dirt and broken concrete materials and sanitary sewer flow equalization pond for this city-owned operation. Number 110 is zoning matter C6813. It's an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the southwest corner of East Kings Highway and Jackson Square Boulevard, changed from R3 Urban Multiple Family Residence District to B2 Neighborhood Business District. Ordinance 111 is zoning matter C6913. It's an ordinance amending chapter 106 of the Code of Ordinances by rezoning property located on the west side of Muck House Drive, 1200 feet north of Westwood Park Drive, changed from R1D Urban One Family Residence District to B3 Community Business District.
Any discussion? Councilman Sam Jenkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On number 111, someone from MPC, I'm, I'm trying to be clear on, what did he put in there? Is that just a, what, they wanna put like storage? I just wanna be sure we're not finessing anything there that we don't want. Just regular storage that they're building there?
Yeah, what, what this is, is just a warehouse, it's a metal storage building, just, it's a warehouse. It's no exterior storage, it's interior, interior only.
But we're not, we're not storing any kind of harmful products or anything there, right?
No, sir.
No kind of explosives or nothing like that, right?
No, sir.
Okay, just wanna be sure.
We, we shouldn't have over the Webster.
It's all good amended. My parents minded me like they put something up there, but I couldn't really make out exactly what it was, so I feel a lot better now. I appreciate that.
It's just general storage as far as we know.
Sam, might need to call Barbara Norton and let her know.
Let her check it out for you.
Yeah, let her check it out for you.
Thank you, Stephen. Thank you, sir.
It looks like 105 recognizes a premium on the interest income of water and sewer, just like the $2 million that we were talking about.
That's what I was about to ask about.
And budgets the money for various projects there.
So that is what that is?
That's what it appears to be.
In 105? Correct.
10, whichever, 105, yes. So, I mean, obviously, those are projects that need to be done, and obviously, they support our consent decree as well as many other aspects of it.
They do. And they are in keeping with the original language of the bond proposition.
Yeah, because part of those projects, certainly with Amos, was already a bond project under there.
Any other discussion?
Well, I mean, I, I guess, that's a pretty good chunk of change. And I'm not saying, it just seems like we're not really very deliberate in our process as compared to what we did the rest of the bond projects. Maybe we don't need to be, I don't know. I've kind of asked that for anybody who's willing to make input. And I don't mean necessarily whether it was this or the SPAR. As you write on the SPAR, we, I can't remember, was it part of municipal auditorium?
It was several projects, the police facility.
Crosslight. But they were all, you know, one of the basic principles we adhere to that we share with you guys, these were all in conjunction with the original bond ordinance. Nothing was done outside of what was originally approved by the, by the tax...
Yeah, I think the SPAR went to further projects that had already been approved.
Right, exactly. It allowed us to enhance some projects, go to further some projects.
Because, I guess what I'm saying, if you said to me, hey, part of these projects, the revenue coming out of bond issuance, number one, didn't cover, and this was a way to advance those projects along before selling the second bond sale? No really issue for debate. But if it was expanding the project or doing something that was in line with the project but wasn't really part of the original project, that is something that I think requires a little higher level of deliberation than I'm getting right now. Now, am I misguided in that? Does anybody feel differently than I?
I mean, I see what you're saying. It, it feels like we were very specific about where we wanted the money to go, and some of those projects still have a need for money. And if there's excess funds sitting around that are now going to the expansion or something new or different or additional, even though it may be the same project, it's not something that was part of what was originally, the original scope. It feels like these are expanded scopes. Is that, is that what you're getting at?
Well, man, I'm saying, we were very specific when we went through all those projects two and a half years ago, and we said, yes, no, yes, no, yes, no. Now there's a little bit more money. Shouldn't we be going through reprioritizing the projects that hadn't have been addressed up until now?
I think there's a, there's a fine line between taking money that we did not know we were gonna have and speeding up a project and expanding a project sometimes. Because it's that expansion that, something that we as a council haven't talked about and had the deliberation over. As I read this, we're, we're doing some expansions. The only new project that would not have been on the bond issue list is the $344,000 going to citywide lift station. And everything else kinda falls under that umbrella of expansion. And that could be giving us a little heartburn.
I think, I think what we can do, it's just like we did with the first two. We submitted, and we went through, and if you guys see specific situations that you need more information on, I mean, this is on, this is on Introduction 1. You know, if there's a specific situation that you need more information on, you know, ask us, and we'll provide it in terms of what it does, or what it does to an existing project, or something like that. But that was the thought process going in. It's one, it need to be in keeping with the original issuance and not go outside that. And that's what we've tried to submit to you guys with Proposition 1 and, and this one also. So if there are specific situations that you wanna look at and see, what is this project? What's the impact of these additional dollars? We can certainly explain that.
Well...
And wouldn't it be sometimes if we had an overrun?
Well, in this case, it was premium dollars mostly, Mr. Shaw, just extra money that we got when we sold the bonds that were not, you know, all the projects that were identified were accounted for, and these were additional dollars that we're trying to find a way to actually move things along and move the whole desire of the citizens along a little bit quicker.
Because if I read this, it looks like the Amos Water Treatment Plant... Because if I read this, it looks like the Amos Water Treatment Plant, there's already been a change order come through on that, and this is to accommodate a change order. Another project is an emergency project. If it's, still falls under that larger project that was originally, originally approved and discussed, that's one thing. But I think we just need to be sure that we have as much information as possible on this.
Yeah, I think new projects and expanded projects, for the record, I mean, we feel more comfortable if there was an explanation as to how that is included in the 2011 GOB propositions.
And again, we can provide more information, but these are the ones, you know, this, this ordinance is actually to replace 97, which, you know, which you guys had approved, which had an issue with an amendment there. But again, it's the kind of thing, we submitted to invite the discussion that there are issues that we can walk through them. We're just trying to find the best way to, you know, to move those projects along in accordance with what the citizens asked for.
And, when I started this, maybe I'm the only one that realized that maybe I was, prior to this, voting for something I didn't really necessarily understand. It wasn't until we got into the streets discussion that it became clear to me that when I had done this, voted for this previously, that I just assumed that it was accelerating the funding source for existing projects in there, and there, A, was no expansion, or B, there was nothing new that we hadn't specifically agreed to in those 2011. And it wasn't until today that, probably the only one here, everybody else was very much in tune to this. I'm happy to say I was the only one that was that ignorant. And so now, I guess what I'm asking is, with regard to this tomorrow, and any more of the surplus, that we at least give us the opportunity to know what is different from what we agreed to on the previous 2011. But I'm not saying we're going to do anything differently. I just want to, you know, at least give us the chance to recognize that.
And I think this is, other than the streets, I think this is the last one, this one and the streets would be the last ones. But Barbara, we have, we have the folks here, Mr. Jenkins, if you'd like to talk about them today.
Okay, I mean, that's, I'm happy to hear what, what is either new and different, and I'm certainly all for speeding up projects that are ready to go, that we're, you know, and the water and sewer, obviously, I have a lot of sympathy to begin with because we've got this consent decree. Maybe on the SPAR side, I probably might have thought about it a little differently. But is there anything on here that's new or different from what was initially in the 2011 bond?
With regards, as far as expanded scope, the work on the, the money that's being requested for the Amos Plant Two, that project, the cost estimate has come in, it was split into two projects, the Plant Two work, and then the caustic lime soda project, the cost estimates came in higher. We are bidding those as alternatives, see if we can get it all done. We're hoping it comes in less, but we do need some additional funds, and that was part of the original scope. The cost, the cost of the projects were higher than what we had estimated. Half a million dollars of that money is for an emergency project at Amos for the ozone system. It's our primary disinfection system. It's very, very critical. We don't have that, those funds available anywhere else. We felt that since it was for Amos, that would be an appropriate use of extra funds. The raw water is the same way, the raw water is for a change order that has not been executed, but it is for a change order for some work that needs to be done in conjunction due to issues that we found at Amos that you just don't know until you start digging in the ground. The other monies are on the sewer side, and those are to put them in our two miscellaneous projects. One is citywide sewer. You know, we have these funds available, we're looking to put them where we can spend them the soonest, because these funds, you know, need to be spent as soon as possible because the actual issuance of the bonds was, what, two years ago? So we are under pressure to go ahead and spend those funds on things that are ready to go. And that's what those other two projects are. Our citywide sewer fund, which funds a bunch of small projects, it funds our consultants for the citywide issues with the consent decree, and then miscellaneous lift stations, which is a bond issue project that was being funded in the second bond sale. But we have some projects ready to go, so we wanted to create that project before we got the second bond sale, that would allow us to go ahead and expend those funds for what they were intended for, which is small miscellaneous lift stations throughout the city.
And the only one that strikes a chord a little bit is this ozone, did you say the ozone project is the one that had, came in over budget, or there's a change order on?
No, no, Plant Two E, the total package of Plant Two E came in, the cost estimate from the engineer came in over budget, and so we split it into two projects. It is still over budget, and so the funds were available from premiums and from interest, and we wanted to finish the project out as complete.
And then, which was the change order one?
The ozone project. And that is something that we've got equipment that is in very bad shape, and it is our primary disinfectant for the city of Shreveport, and we really can't afford to lose that system. And it's, it's equipment we have, if you look in your, in the book, we have a seventeen million dollar project for the ozone system to rehab the entire thing. That system was put online back in 1989 originally. That technology is so out of date, it's almost impossible to find parts. There's only one supplier, and it's kind of remanufactured, just keeping stuff going. We need to keep that system going until we can find the money to do the seventeen to twenty million dollar ozone complete overhaul project. And that's, that's critical.
Barbara, just a clarification, that our fact sheet says that the ozone project is an emergency project.
Yes.
That the change order project is the $400,000 to Amos.
Is, for raw water, yes. And that's for a, that would be for a change order. We've gotten the pricing from the contractor to do a change order on the raw water project that's, you know, pertinent to that scope. We didn't expand the scope, it was due to some issues that we found. If you've been out to Amos, we have all kinds of, we're packed in pretty tight, and every time we touch the ground, we find unfortunately, something we didn't expect to be there, which obviously costs, you know.
And who is the, on the change order, who is the engineer on that project?
The change order for the raw water project, that is AECOM. They were the design engineer for the original project.
Okay. We didn't have a project called Citywide Lift Station Rehabilitation in the original projects. The question is, why is this a new project?
Is it citywide lift station? We had a lift sta, a miscellaneous lift station project, I would need to go back and check. There was a miscellaneous lift station project in the 2011 bond issue, and it was not funded with the first set of bonds. I don't remember the exact title, if this is correct or not, I will check.
Yeah, this is another one where if we could keep the titles the same, it would be easier.
I thought we had, I thought we had, I thought we had done that, because we had a conversation about it, but let me double check.
But it's called, it's called a new, here you say it's a new project, and, so if we could just look at that.
But we haven't created that project yet. This would be the first time it would be funded. It was supposed to be funded with the second bond sale.
Oh, okay.
It has not been funded yet.
Okay, so it was anticipated, but it's not been.
It was anticipated, it's actually a line, it's a project in the bond sale, it was going to be funded with the second set. And hopefully, we have that name.
All right, that explains it.
Okay.
I guess it won't have any effect on, hold on.
What, what, what's that?
I guess it won't have any, it won't have any effect on the. All right, any other questions?
Thank you, Barbara. Mr. Chairman, if we may, also, I'd like to ask, if Shelley would come forward on Proposition Two, just to give you guys a little, perhaps a greater sense of comfort in what was done there, if that's.
That would be great. And like I said, I may have been the only guy that slept through all those meetings, everybody else way up to speed.
I think the council just gets a little smarter every two weeks.
Well, I think, I didn't bring it with me because I didn't know it'd be disgusting, but I did send, I think each of you received a spreadsheet that talked about where we were spending the money. I can resend that if you don't recall. I sent it out a couple, the week prior, two weeks prior to it being on the agenda, just so that you could read through. You know, if Huntington, we, we did not change the scope of any project. If you read the project, we're spending those funds exactly the way the project is described. There are places like Huntington where we asked for three million dollars, we got two and a half million dollars. There are things that have come there, such as drainage issues and equipment needs, and without those things right, we will have spent this money and then have wasted it. Right, so if you look through those, you'll see that there, there are things like that. Some of the money that we spent was to accelerate the tennis center con, which is not adding anything to that scope, it's just getting that going. Municipal auditorium, I mean, we could spin, spin till it's, you know, but as you start to uncover things in that building, and you begin to meet with citizens, it just gives us an opportunity to meet some of those needs that we don't, we can't meet otherwise. Roofing, that was not originally part of the project. Some of the windows on the outside, we wanted to do, that was, were in the original scope, but we couldn't afford it when we first started. I mean, it's just, the longer we wait to do projects, the more and more things cost. And one of the things that happens is that we put all these projects at, at one time, so you don't really get a good, good competitive bids, because you're limited to the number of contractors, and things are a lot more expensive than we estimated maybe in 2010, when you're not doing the project till 2013. But none of it was done adding anything to a project. In other words, we weren't saying, okay, now that we have this money, let's build a tennis center too here. Nothing like that. All of it falls in the original scope of the projects. Corbies is the same way, equipment mostly is what that is at Corbies, and some funding for increasing cost of that project. It was, actually, came in way more than the estimate, and we've cut it, and cut it, and cut it, and this is a way to make sure we get that project, not only, we had no FFNE for, you know, furnitures or fixtures or equipment, because we couldn't afford it. This gives us the way to finish the project as we had described it to the citizens, is basically what most of our money has done. And like I said, I send us a spreadsheet, if I need to send it again, I can. And the only one that accelerates is the tennis center renovations, and those will be at Southern Hills, to get those back into playable condition for things like tournaments that we're missing out on.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks, Shelley.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, we wanted to be sure, get some of that on the record so that it'd be clear.
Mr. Thompson, is there any table legislation?
I'm not aware of any that anybody has discussed to bring off of the table.
If not, I believe that brings us to property standards appeals. Ms. Farnell?
From the thickness of our workbook, we have a couple.
Our first case is in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area, it is located at 3634 Sumner Place. I don't think the owner of this property is present. I will tell you that, right now, the only thing the property has in rehab is secured, and what I would ask is that you would overturn the property standard board demolition order and close this case.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Oliver Jenkins to overturn. Please vote. Councilman O Jenkins. Six yes, one absent.
The next case is in Councilman Joe Shine's area. The address is 1831 Hollywood Avenue. We have about one or two facial boards there that needs to be completed. Councilman Shine, owner has done quite a bit of work replacing the rafters and all. I would ask that the board's demo order be overturned and this case closed.
So move. Is it, is anybody here representing that?
No, sir.
Okay.
Motion by Vice Chair, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins to overturn. Please vote, and that is six yes, one absent.
The next case is 1744 Astor Street, is in Councilwoman McCullough's area. The owner is present. This was a case wherein we had ordered the house to be totally secured. The owner had until October the 7th to actually accomplish the sale. There were six signatures that was waiting on, they received two, they lacked in four more, they're waiting for the FedEx to come. The owner is here, and I've spoken to him. It appears that the sale may be accomplished within thirty days, and I have no objection to continuing it for thirty days.
I was suggesting that, I was going to suggest that Oliver Jenkins handle that, Sam.
Okay, well, let Oliver handle it.
You know, I tread very lightly.
I'm going to err on the side of caution and take Councilman Sam Jenkins' motion for thirty day extension, seconded by Councilman Oliver Jenkins.
But let me, I want a little bit of discussion here. But does that mean, so it's not currently secured?
It is not currently secured. What has happened is, if you recall, on the last council meeting, there was someone else present. I understand today that that information, he did not, oh, Mr. Berg did not get a clear understanding of what he was supposed to do. He has assured me that he will have the property secured on tomorrow, and since he's done very good work in the past, I'm willing to give him that chance. We will be monitoring on tomorrow to make sure that it is done. He is here today, if you care to ask him any questions.
And that, I certainly want to support my colleagues here, that would be my one stipulation, that you could have the thirty days, assuming that he's secured.
Yes, of course. Yes, sir.
Got a motion and a second? Please vote.
November 11.
Six yes, one absent. Case four.
Our last case is 3638 Michigan Street, is in Councilman Sam Jenkins' area. This structure is now occupied. Citizen has abated the care premise. Public Works did remove all of the debris. I ask that you would overturn the property standards demolition order and close this case.
So move.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins, second by Councilman Webb.
Those are all the cases that I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. Looks like we made some progress today. And that is six yes, one absent. I believe that brings us to ABO.
Our first case is on Circle K, 7774, it's in cap number one. Just to refresh your memory on this a little bit, last year, they were brought before the city council, the police department had denied them for three violations. They were put on one-year probation. I put the minutes of the, the meeting in there, also, so you can review that if you need to. Basically, what it was determined, if they had any more violations within that next year, to bring them back for the city council. They actually had three violations. One was four days after they were put on probation, was an underage sales on 8/17/2012. Terrence Palmer pled guilty. There's no ABO card on person, 12/12/2012. That one was not processed by the district attorney. And then on 4/17/2013, underage sales, Ms. Page, and that was supposed to go on trial, 8/23/2013, and that was actually in DA probation was on that one. But anyway, they had three violations since then, and bringing it back before you for your action.
And I was trying to find out, when they were, when they were placed on probation, did we put any requirements in that, you know, that card machine and various things?
I believe it says in the minutes, they already had a card machine in place.
All right, so let's, let's hear from them, and see if we can find out what's going on. So let's hear from them and see if we can find out what's going on.
How you doing?
Good, how are y'all?
If you would, please state your name and address.
My name is Robin Donahue, the Regional Operations Director for Circle K Convenience Stores in North Louisiana and Arkansas. I believe I was here six, seven months ago, right after relocating here. Subsequently, after meeting with y'all the last time, I was made aware of this. We have made huge strides and continue to change the culture and change this human nature. We do have age verifiers in all of the locations. We have actually got additional software to allow my district managers to verify on laptop exactly who's carding, when they're carding. We have put loss prevention in place, where they are not only doing night rides verifying cash for robbery prevention and safety measures, ensuring that the age verifiers are in use, but they also watch them in the evening on both shifts, typically when a manager is not there. We have also hired a bars program. It's an independent program that I pay for, that sends in secret shoppers, in addition to what city does, to ensure that we are carding right on tobacco and alcohol. We have changed our policies to have a zero tolerance. And actually, it does impact the site managers' bonus program if they do have any kind of citations. We have calls in place where the site managers and district managers call. We have promissory notes that each CSR is required to sign, as well as being reminded to card every day. So since my arrival a year ago, roughly, I do have a vision that Circle K is a great partner. And we continue to combat the human element, but make no mistake, it is first and foremost top of mind. I did receive this, and I did call. I have no record of a Terrence Palmer that has ever worked for me in the entire city of Shreveport or the state of Louisiana, so I'm not real sure what it is. I did call to get clarity. I was aware of the ABO card after the fact. It was the CSR opted not to communicate to us within a timely fashion. We did find out through gossip. She was immediately dismissed of her position. I did find out on August or April 17th, excuse me, the manager was immediately placed on suspension. The employee was immediately let go of her position. Subsequently, after investigation of every CSR and all of the controls that we had put in place since the last time I was here before you, the manager negated his responsibilities, and he was let go. The market manager, or district manager, as I believe that y'all would note, was also documented for not following through, and subsequently, she is no longer with us. I do have a new manager in position. Her name is Sandy Mylum. She's standing to my left here. She's been with the company for eight years, and since the day she arrived in that store, on April 17th, she has brought with you, with her, every single documentation, promissory note, and is prepared to discuss with you all of her proactive measures to ensure that we are good business partner and upholding the law. I also have a market manager, Matthew Smith, sitting here, also with my left, who will then also tell you that he does everything to be as proactive as possible to maintain good business partnership and to make sure that we appear uphold the law. I hope that some of y'all have gone into a Circle K and seen some changes, but this is a zero tolerance for me. And it is something that has to change and will continue to change, and there is no more, there's no leniency here.
When did the probation go in place? When did the one-year probation go in place?
I wasn't here yet. I believe the letter was dated August 17th of 2012. Is that correct? August 17th of 2012.
So you would have been coming off of probation, the one-year probation would have been up August of this year?
No.
That's correct. What happened is they went to renew, and when they renewed, it was before that probation actually occurred. And so that's when I noted the violations and brought it before the council.
Okay. The violations occurred during the probation period, but the probation period as a whole is up right now?
As of right now, it's up. When it was noted and when the letter was actually sent out, that was prior to the end of the probation period.
And I know some of my colleagues may have a question, but you know, this is my take on it. You know, it appears from a management standpoint that you all are working very hard. I do frequently go by this store from time to time. And it appears to me the problem continues to be with the employees, and that's why I wanted to hear what steps you would take with these employees. Look like you're doing everything you can from a management standpoint to deal with it, but some people just appear to just not get it. But you are disciplining those persons as well as the persons who are supervising them. And it's for that reason I'm gonna suggest maybe another, maybe six-month probationary period. Just gotta keep our eye on everything. Allow you to keep your permit. Hopefully, we'll come down to doing that probationary period at zero. Look like you're trying to take it in that direction. I remember the last time, it seemed to have been more numerous than what we're talking about today that was involved. But I just hate to see the company lose its permit and its advantage to be able to compete and do business, because you just got some people who just maybe just don't get it, you know?
Mr. Jenkins, I wish I could explain the human.
Right, so that's gonna be, that's gonna be my motion to overturn the denial and place you on probation for a six-month period of time. And if anything happens, it comes back again.
I'll second that, so we can discuss it.
Corporal, when we place people or person or businesses or whatever on probation, why do we not know that the probation was violated before it comes up for renewal?
It's just the number of violations out there, I just didn't catch it in time. That's basically what happened. I was gone, as you know, for five months out of that time, and I'm...
So if we place their business on a six-month probation, that means if there is any violation, we won't know about it until it comes up for renewal?
I'll be around for this one, you'll know about it.
Councilman Jenkins, what I'd like to add to it is, I'd like, during the six-month period, if there is a violation, I want it to be a part of our motion, that it immediately come back to us at that time. And certainly, I understand the human element. You know, all of us have worked with employees at some time and understand that part of it. But I also know that, as you told me about all the changes that you were making, I was reading the minutes from a little over a year ago, and Mr. Tim Brown said, almost word for word, the same thing you said. So if there are licensed reader machines or ID-reading machines in those stores, somebody's gotta be held to the utmost responsibility, own those.
I agree.
To be sure that everybody's using it. And having a good training plan is step one. But internally, y'all gotta pay attention to this.
I agree. And that's why I did bring Sandy here, so, yes, Miss...
How many, I mean, I'd like to know the scope of Circle K's that do not have alcohol permit. Are there any in the city of Shreveport?
No, so there are not.
And let me, I guess this is really a question for Corporal Collins. Do we have any, I'm gonna use the term national chains, that some branches have lost their permits?
Over on Hearn Avenue, yeah, they lost theirs for a long time. And they continue to prosper. They're in an excellent place right there, as you know, but they lost theirs for quite a while.
And they got it back, though?
No. I don't think they have it yet.
I thought they sold. They might not. Yeah, that's it, that's why.
What was the answer, we couldn't hear it?
They do not have a permit at this time.
They have the right, but they've not applied for it.
And... I mean, I guess, and I'm not debating whether these, that the management in place is not capable to do it. But I guess I don't have any evidence to suggest that they are. And that, I'm just being frank with you. I have, what I see here is evidence of repeated problems. And I don't see a current control measure, because the most recent one, right?
417.
Is 417. Now, obviously, I believe your new manager there is new since that time.
She arrived on 417.
Okay, I mean, that was implemented after the fact, I mean...
We had a long-term manager in that position, and he was not doing protocol. And neither was the market manager, hence the change.
Okay. I'll just say, for me personally, not that I'm interested in making threats, and that's not necessarily what this is, but I mean, I think we are extending y'all a lot of latitude, because there is very little on this thing that, to me, suggests, other than a new person here who should be given every opportunity to succeed. That's just my feeling that in six months' time, I hope we don't see him again.
Is it, is it, is it anything peculiar about that location?
I don't know if there's anything peculiar about the location. I mean, Sandy could probably speak more to it, off of I-20 and Pines, it's a very busy location. It is, for lack of a better word, it was mismanaged, and I don't think that the severity and the communication was implied as it should have been. And that was a change that was necessary, that had to be made. That's why I say, since Sandy arrived there on 417, I was devastated. I didn't know that we were on probation, and we put all these steps into place after I met with you and found that out, excuse me. And all of these steps were put into place, and that's why Sandy did bring all of her documentation and prepared to tell you what she has been doing as an onsite manager to correct the situation and to explain how important and the severity and the consequences that it would devastate the business to the point of not being able to sustain by continued violations and loss of alcohol permits and licensing.
Is it, is one of the reasons because the customer traffic is so great until the people, they are overwhelmed?
I'd like to be able to tell you that it is, and I'd like to be able to tell you that it takes a long time, as many CSRs have said before me and told me how long it takes to use the age verifier. But bottom line, net-net, that employee, which is explained, it forever changes their life. I mean, they have a criminal record from the moment that they opt to make that decision. It's a decision that really shouldn't be their option, because we're here to, again, be a great retailer and partner, and we don't want to violate the law. And I certainly would hate to terminate somebody that just got a misdemeanor or felony or whatever they're gonna get for something that we have all the tools and training provided and communicated to. So I don't care how long it takes, quite frankly. I think it's imperative that the machine be utilized, and it is non-negotiable, and I will support any customer complaint from my market manager, site manager, and CSR that says that they get yelled at, because it might potentially take too long to use the age verifier, because it's for their safety and it's the law. It's the law.
Do y'all emphasize that? I mean, do you emphasize that to your employees that, you know, although you might feel like that you're overwhelmed with the number of customers coming in, but make sure that you follow the letter of the law?
From the day that they walk into the door, the site manager calls if they're not there two and three times per shift and communicates. When she is there, she directs. She can't stay there 24 hours, seven days a week, although I wish that she could. The market manager then backs up. They do night rides. That's why I've gotten loss prevention involved, because we can't be there 24/7. And it's imperative that if Mr. Leatherwood sees something, an infraction or something, that immediately calls and addresses it with the site and to drive home that importance. It is the law. It's not their option.
Kind of the reason why I'm saying that, because if, let's say if Mike would go in and buy some alcohol and leave there and have an accident, and the news media find out that this store has been having problems, and you know, it's gonna, it's gonna blow up in somebody's face. So, you know, that's why we have to be extremely careful, you know? And an accident might not happen, but then an accident could happen.
I want to try to be accident-free for you, Mr. Shine, and for the safety of any person that attempts to buy alcohol. So it is important.
Say it again.
I said, I want to ensure that we are safe for any person that attempts to buy alcohol by following the law. I want to make sure that all of those practices are in place. We are over-communicating to the point of, we over-communicate often. There is no tolerance any longer.
Please do, I mean, 'cause you could over-communicate, and it still, still doesn't seem like it's eradicating the problem that we have. And the problem is that you still get violations. And when you get violations, I don't see any news media in here, 'cause we have some of the best, I dare you to quote me on this, we have some of the best news media here in Shreveport that you would find anywhere. But sometimes it do have a tendency to kind of blow stories out of proportion. And somebody's gonna wonder why Mike keeps on approving, you know, this area, and we just keep on having problems. So I would hope that you all would get on top of it. Make sure when your employees come to work that they bring the A-game, 'cause it puts us in a bad position if something happens. And sometimes, that something will happen.
I agree.
So please do.
We certainly appreciate the work that you're trying to do internally. I think you understand from our comments and questions, if we see y'all's happy faces back here in the next six months, it won't be as pleasant.
I understand.
And make sure your employees understand that.
Will do.
Any other discussion? I have a motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins for six months probation, with them coming back before us if there is a violation within that six-month period. And did I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by the vice chair. Please vote.
Thank you.
Six yes, one absent.
Thank you for that. You've got a tab number two. This was heard a couple weeks ago, and there was a couple questions concerning, that you had questions about. The first one, I said there was three pending charges, and you asked for those three pending charges. What was the status of them? He let me know, or he told the council, that basically, his name was swapped around in a couple of his charges, and that's what happened, they were no longer pending. Actually, in 829, he was convicted of three more alcohol offenses. So on top of the reasons he was denied in the first place, now he's got three more alcohol charges or convictions. And also, he did not put those on his application, so he falsified his application on those three also. So basically, just go over again, he's on probation for felony theft, that's one reason he's denied. He failed to disclose the first three offenses or convictions initially, and then come to find out, he failed to disclose the last three that he just got in August. And plus, he's got those three violations, which they can't have more than two in two years, he's got three in one year. They actually happened back in 2007. He failed to show up for court dates, I believe he was in court two different times, arrested on bench warrants two different times, 'cause he failed to show up for court. He finally got arrested again in August, at which he pled guilty to all three charges, so. And also, we asked about ownership. I couldn't find anything different on the ownership, he's not listed anywhere on there. There's a corporation in charge of it. With these ownerships, basically, when they do an LLC through the state, they can put anybody's name down on there. You know, it's not necessary that, it doesn't have to be the owners, let's say the state doesn't check on that. So our paperwork matches the state paperwork, and he's not listed anywhere on that paperwork.
So it's not their, it's not the ownership permit, it's his ABO card?
It's just ABO. That's correct.
First of all, 2007, I got a ticket. That ticket they gave me, that store was not in my name, my brother's name. And I was running over there, and one of... And one night, they gave me a ticket. So, my brother said he was gonna take care of it. So, I don't know what happened on that issue. He talked about the bench warrant, whatever it is. It happened. And then I took care of it. Now, about the other issues, the three tickets, they put my name upside down. First, last, last, first. I got the paper, too. Plus, I called the city court, and they told me the same thing. Even I talked to the lawyer who handled this situation. They tell me, yeah, that's how it happened. So, I don't have no three tickets like that three times. It's like one time, really, they gave me. And the second time, they did concurrent, you know? Like, when I was in jail, you know, and the judge watered that two in one, like, you know, everything concurrent. That's all the city told me. And I verify everything. Now, if you want to verify that, you can call them or whatever, you know?
You're on a felony probation. When is that probation?
Now, I would like to tell you about this, the felony probation. I had a problem with my family, like the ownership things. We run business different way in America. How we run, say, you're my brother, and you have the corporation in your name. But the money we are investing is out of the picture and it's not gonna show in the state. You know, and that's how we run the business. So, like, he's telling that I have no name in the corporation. It's true. There's a reason. Because, you know, we are putting money family-wise. So, we have that, yeah.
Now, what I'm saying, you had a, it's a, one of the reasons you were denied is because you have a, you're on probation from a felony conviction. It has nothing to do with the business, has to do with you. You have a felony conviction, and they say that's one of the reasons.
Okay, this is not a conviction. The judge, when I went in front of the judge, judge didn't water anything. Because, you know, he didn't sentence me. He gave me two-year probation to pay this restitution that I had a problem with my cousin.
And they don't put you on probation unless you get convicted.
Yeah, they put me on probation because of that. So, once I pay that money within two years, everything will be squashed. Even my lawyer, I got the paperwork, too.
And you may have to come back after all that's cleaned up to deal with your ABO card. But right now?
I know, but you know.
The record is showing. Hold a second, so it won't get all mumbled up. I'm saying, right now, the record is showing, see, if a person could work, I wanted to work at the same time now. You know, we got to try to deal with what's in front of us.
You're right.
The problem that we have here is that you're on probation from a felony conviction. And I don't wanna keep ringing it out in here, but that's what's, that's what the problem is.
But they didn't convict me yet, you know? It's, it's not, it's like, they give me middle grade theft. It's not even felony all the way.
No, it's middle grade felony theft.
Felony theft they gave me, but it will be squashed under Article 843, you know?
You know, that's not in here, though.
I got the paperwork.
You got, you got an article, whatnot.
So, it's Article like 843. Once I go back in front of the judge after two years, I finish everything. I don't get in trouble on the probation. I pay the money, everything good. Still dismiss the case. That's the condition.
This is what I'm, this is what I'm trying to explain to you, my friend. I was like, you're gonna have to come back once you get all that cleaned up. The problem you got right now is that you're on active probation.
Yeah, but I mean, this is my request to the city council that, you know, if I can maintain my ABO card, then that's the only way I can maintain my business over here, the way I'm putting my operation. Otherwise, I've got to ship my business somewhere else.
Well, if I'm understanding this right, what are the concerns I had? If I'm understanding this right?
It's like two years.
The business permit is not put before us right now. The permit for that business to operate, it's alcohol, it's not before us. This is your ABO card that you're not, that you do not appear right now to be qualified to have because of the probation. The only thing I could say to you is you're gonna probably come back once you get all of your court or legal issues resolved. Come back, come back through the department and reapply and do what you need to do to try to get an ABO card. But we're not taking anything from the business. This is your personal ABO card. So, my motion is gonna be to uphold the department's denial of your ABO card because it's a felony conviction and the fact that you're on probation.
Motion by Councilman Sam Jenkins to uphold ABO. Second by Councilman Webb. Please vote.
Once you get all your legal stuff straightened out, come back and try to reapply through the department.
I mean, I know, I'm gonna get that ABO card after two years, like 2015. What I'm gonna do with these two years in Shreveport? That's my question.
You're not gonna sell alcohol, sir.
That's right.
We're finished.
Get your job.
That is six yes, one absent.
Corporal Collins, do y'all have any openings?
Excuse me?
Do y'all have any openings? He was trying to figure out what he was gonna do for the next two years.
He wouldn't want his test.
Oh. You don't think he qualifies?
Maybe not at this time.
Okay. Look, I take no pledge in any of this, but that's the law, that's the way it's set up.
Some kind of restriction and, you know, I can.
Shut up. You're not, some things you have to try to do before you get down here. The point I'm making to you is, we can't move forward with your personal ABO. And it's very fortunate that the company, that the store itself, is not getting this permit yanked. You know what I'm saying?
Right.
Okay?
I mean, I'm not one in the rest or anything, but to maintain the business, people need to, you know, I don't have to be in the picture, but to, for the safety I got to have, that's all it can be.
I wish we could have a definite outcome, but can't do it.
We have no MPC or zoning appeals today. Are there any reports from officers' boards or committees?
I'll just say, on behalf of the next Public Safety Committee meeting, still waiting on a little, a little bit of input before we schedule that. And that is in reference to two things. One is the taxi folks with regard to insurance. And the other is the, I'll call it geographic representation of bars and/or requests. So, and I'm not saying I'm in any rush for any, either of those two, but those are the two things that we're kind of at a stagnant point on. And I don't know if Jackie got any feedback or talked to any of the cab folks about what they were gonna give us in terms of their insurance.
I don't know. We'll check and get, let you know tomorrow.
Okay. But I mean, there's no, like, compelling reason why we need to do it this week. It's just, those are kind of where we are in terms of.
This is enough data for you. I did hear back from Jennifer in GIS. She specified the format that Corporal Collins needs to get with that information, and they'll have it produced. It should be done this week, so.
Okay.
What was the, what was the last one you said? The geographical location?
Okay, so there's, there's a couple of things. One thing is, there's a discussion about allowing bars in a specific area to provide, offer liquor on Sundays.
Oh.
Okay? And one of the criteria in that discussion is, is there an area, other areas of the city where there's a density of specific bars and/or distance from neighborhoods that might also be interested in doing this or would be, might want the same provision? So, that's really what.
I remember that. I remember.
Mr. Thompson, for tomorrow, just for my purposes, would, can I get a verification of the date that's on the gate ordinance goes into effect? Because I've heard varying dates, and I just wanna nail that down. Any other reports from officers' boards or committees? If not, clerk's report.
Actually, two things. Tomorrow, there will be an annual report of the Historic Preservation Commission. I believe Mr. Callaway is gonna be here. He's not a city employee, and I think he would appreciate it if he could get called up early, maybe under your comments, to give that report. And also, immediately after this meeting, we will have a special meeting to go into executive session to discuss Urban Housing of America versus City of Shreveport.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. And just to follow up on Mr. Thompson's comments, as soon as we adjourn, as quick as we can get back there and reconvene in executive session, sooner we'll be headed to the House.
As soon as we adjourn, if we could open the meeting here.
Okay. All right, so we will adjourn. Keep your seat. We'll open the new meeting. This meeting is now adjourned. Executive session is now called to order.
All right.
We need a roll call, Ms.?
Ms. McCollough, Mr. Everson.
Here.
Mr. Oliver Jenkins.
Present.
Mr. Corbin.
Here.
Mr. Webb.
Here.
Mr. Shine.
Present.
Mr. Sam Jenkins.
And I would suggest that all of the members would head directly back to the meeting.
I think you need a motion to go into executive session.
Don't move.
To discuss Urban Housing of America versus City of Shreveport and Metropolitan Planning Commission of Caddo Parish Civil Action Number 09-CV-0317, United States District Court, Western District of Louisiana, Shreveport Division.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Motion by the vice chair, second by Councilman Sam Jenkins. Please vote. Six yes, one absent.
Do I gotta stop by pledge? I don't think I'm arguing. I know, I know, it'll take you 30 minutes with all that. 30 minutes with all that you got to work with. Yeah. Yeah. If you make it quick, I'll come.